And thank you guys, everybody for being here. And I will turn it over to Dr. Newton to get us kicked off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very pleased that we have a lot of talent assembled in the room this evening to help us through our conversations that we, the questions that we may have regarding potential policy change language to our cellphone policy. I know that we have some guests from the community in here as well, but perhaps just to re-level the playing field for everyone and not just pick on a select few. If we, all district employees who are attending tonight's meeting, if we could go around and briefly, just your name and the current role you'll now be in in this coming school year. So Steve Newton, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kern, you want to take us on?
Steve Kern, Director of Special Services.
Jen Segrill, CFO.
Jeff Lewis, Executive Director of Student Services.
Amy Polly, General Counsel.
I'm Kenny, Executive Director of Technology.
Andy Adams, Executive Director of School Operations.
Jeff Backwood, Principal.
Or Kershner, Principal East.
Karen Dobrik, Principal at Central.
Ashley Go, Principal Kerry.
Chuck Kern, Director of Secondary.
Gary Cross, Community Education Director.
Sue Chatfield, Executive Director of Bachelorette.
Mike Maloney, Principal of Triad High School.
Eric Dunne, Executive Director of Johnson.
Tom Jones, NTSS and Bible War Coordinator.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here to share some of your expertise as it comes up in the conversation. We may have to have you tag in and tag out, join the table if a question is posed to your area of expertise. I did ask a few of our folks to sit at the table, perhaps anticipating that they may receive a few more questions than others, but maybe I'm wrong. Couple of things just to level the conversation, and I did print off some copies here. If I could pass those around to trustees, first page is the actual policy that talks about our electronic devices. And pages two, three, and four is the associated admin reg. And just to remind the board that normal procedure is, the first page, if you contemplated changing policy, that would be this page that would form, include the normal language change that goes out to forty-five day review, and then the board votes on it. The pages two, three, and four, the admin reg, as long as it wasn't contrary to policy, the typical procedure for adjustments there are the cabinet to receive very much what the will of the board is, and then you would task it back to us to propose admin reg changes that are ultimately approved by cabinet, which are then shared back with the board. So some of what procedurally the next steps would be may have to do with whether you would like to see one or the other or both potentially changed. I would like to say just one last thing, and that is we did not have any folks in the room come with any sort of prepared presentation, which would suggest that they have a direction that they would like the board to move on, and instead they are just making themselves available as a resource to answer any question from their area of expertise. So the outcome of this work session will likely have to do with the kinds of conversational questions that individual board members pose. And so with that, I'll turn it back over to Madam Chair to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. So I think to start, I'd just like to lead off with, and board, just so everybody were on the same page, we're just asking questions tonight. Like Dr. Newton said, no one has a presentation or a, you know, something they're just coming dying to tell us. But we can, we can fire away with questions and then for our administrators, as you know, as you have something that you want to weigh in, we'll just take turns and go through and let all of you speak to whatever questions the board has asked. But we're really grateful you're here. I want to start off with just a higher level question. I think we have some, some things that we'll want to maybe get into the weeds about. But in terms of a cellphone policy, as Steve pointed out, the, the policy itself is very, very short. We do have three pages of admin reg though that deal with how cellphones are or electronic devices should be used or not used in our district. So as we, as a board, consider possibly tightening things up and asking you and your schools and in programs to really kind of rein it in and, and you know, maybe, maybe cellphones are a big distraction. That's what we hear and that's our concern. And we hear from a lot of community members, but from your areas of expertise, what are, what are some problems we need to look for? What are some things that maybe we're not, you know, as we look at the bigger picture that this might be a problem? What are some things you need us to know that, that we should take into consideration before we make any high level changes to the use of these devices in our district? Does that make sense what I'm asking? So I'll just, I'll start here. If you don't, I mean, if, or just if you have a thought or something that goes to that, I guess, let us know you want to talk and we'll just go around the room. Anybody?
So trustee, what I hear you saying is first, if you want to know if we have a policy in our school?
No, if, if we are looking to tighten up on cellphone usage in our district or electronic device usage, I know some of the schools are, have really kind of reined this in already, but are there things we need to know? With special ed, are there, are there considerations for students who might use it as a, I mean, if a child has a medical issue or and needs it, or are there? I, I don't, I don't know. I'm, if you have concerns, higher level concerns about unintended consequences that us tightening up on this might have, I'd love to hear those. Does that make sense? So I know some of you have really already tightened up on this, but are there things we need to be thinking about as we work on policy?
I'll start off with the special education component, and I think it is addressed in our current policy that for individual students per their IEP, they may have the right to and absolutely need some type of assisted technology in order to access their education. And so as we look at possibly revising the policy or, or clarifying and adding to it, whatever, it's just important to ensure that we don't write a policy that is in conflict with what we are required to provide for us.
It's one of the pros and cons of having an actual cellphone in the IEP. I mean, obviously before phones were, we never had them in IEPs or 504s, and I've heard pros and cons. So I'd love to know your thoughts on pros and cons of having an actual cellphone accommodation.
I think one of the really neat things about assisted technology is that there are multiple different devices that do the same thing for a student. So it would probably be fairly rare that we would need to write in specifically that a student needs their cellphone. But we can, we can write IEPs in a way that gets to the heart of what the assisted technology needs to provide to the student and believe it, leave that IEP language flexible. Now, there might be individual students who would need, you know, a medical monitoring device that is their cell, their cellphone, that there aren't any other options. But that, what we write in IEP has to be required and necessary in order for the student to access their education. But we often do not write, it's so specific that it's one, one type of device.
Because I would be concerned that if a child had their cellphone due to, say, school posthumity and not every teacher in the building knew that that child did that cellphone, that would be my biggest concern is, you know, besides the kids saying, hey, that kid has a cellphone. Tell me how, I mean, is it as simple as administration saying this child can carry their phone?
It would be concerning if the teacher didn't know that a student has an accommodation somewhere. That is, maybe his students, I don't know, their teachers have to know what's written in that IEP and what a student needs in the classroom. So that would be concerning if the teacher didn't know. And we are supposed to train folks on what is written in IEP. And that includes a student as well. So oftentimes we need to do some training with the student on how to appropriately use the assisted technology, not just give it to them and assume they don't have to use it correctly.
But, but do, to follow along with what she was asking, like, I mean, I would assume the classroom teacher would know, or your high school, you know, their six or eight teachers would know. But what if the kiddos in first grade, does the sixth grade, do the sixth grade teachers know that this kiddo's? I mean, does the entire staff in the entire building know that, you know, student X has a glucose monitoring on their phone?
That they might not, but then being able to teach the student how to appropriately advocate that this is my medical monitoring device.
Madam Chair, may I clarify your question?
Sure.
And I apologize, Dr. Kern, this, I didn't, I didn't tell you I might ask this because it just occurred to me. We're talking an awful lot about cellphones, but I think there's some concerns about electronic devices beyond just cellphones that can distract. Would you imagine that we might have more need in your world, or at least for health reasons, with some of the smartwatches that might be measuring pulse and some of those things?
Absolutely. Yep. All of that, I mean, the devices, there's so much biometric data nowadays that are gathered through the devices. So for sure, the smart rings nowadays that are being used, yeah, absolutely.
Dr. Kern, are there are there privacy issues that that we would need to worry about for a child if they're allowed to have their device or their watch and be monitoring it when, if other children are not allowed to? I mean, are, are we disposing anything that we're not, that we should not be implying about a child?
I think potentially, and I don't know, I honestly don't have the best answer. I think Amy Polly might be more involved with that thing, for sure.
Right. So I don't know of any, like, we've been told to discover various kinds of things recently, but you have to, you know, if you do have privacy rights of the student on the IEP or a student on the report, and so would we, kind of, not average it, but when, when it becomes obvious, we do have some privacy concerns about why we're asking questions that they're getting to singling out a student because of an accommodation and then issues there. It's, it's kind of a, I think as states and as districts are moving toward modifying cellphone policies, those are concerns that it's, it's no one has any clear answers right at all, but it's definitely an issue, right? So we know it. Take the very easy way down to assume that, by the way, it's one of the people who have a phone and well, I don't know exactly how we deal with it yet, but.
And not a phone door at all, right? But just something we should think about as we're tweaking things so that we're making sure that that doesn't have any issue.
I think one of the additional, you know, not singling out a student, but also going into search and seizure type of, you know, if a student's using their cellphone and the teacher wants to verify search the phone that they were using it for glucose monitoring, I would imagine we would have some sticky situations with that.
Any other questions thinking about special ed? Does anybody else have anything higher level you'd like to tell us we should keep in mind as we're working on this policy or any changes?
Well, I'll, I'll just attack the open. Just if you're going to write a policy about cellphones, please write it very, very specific and not leave it up for interpretation, not leave it up to where somehow one school can have a different policy than another school because of some ambiguityless language in the policy. No shells and maze, but lots of wills in your language. So there's just no interpretation.
I totally agree with that. I, I've spoken with numerous teachers, parents, grandparents, and some of, and I've been, you guys have been kind enough to call me back when I've asked the question. It seems like unless we do something really strong, those cellphones will still be, the kids will still have access to them. And I had a lot of time to think about this, and I'm almost, I talked to a gal from Glen Rock. She knew you. And they've gone with those yonder pouches. And initially I thought, I don't think we can do that, but I don't know. If those cellphones are on those children anyhow, they're going to use them. And so I think one strict policy, and I don't know how hard or how expensive it's going to be, but I would be a proponent of, because it, it, one teacher doesn't enforce it, another teacher will, it makes it hard for everybody. And
The challenges when you have those, those situations, you know, where the parent says, well, we have an emergency in our family and I told my kid to keep their phone on them and I told them I was going to text them or call them about what was, you know, what happened.
Call the school.
Exactly. And when they, when the kid gets their consequence because they have their phone out and then they call the central admin or they call their local school or person, we need everybody on the same page to say, we have a policy that says you're not allowed to have your phone.
And, and this one gal said, don't say you're making your policy stricter. Turn it around and say, we are giving kids more time on task. We are giving teachers more attention with their students. We are helping the mental health of, of students. We are helping with behaviors because I think cellphones aid in, in misbehavior. Hey, let's meet up at this place for a fight for this. So I think that if we had one strong policy, and so a sub would go into this building and know it's the same policy if it went into that building. And I'm, I would, am a strong proponent of, because a lot of those phones, but I think the junior high has really got it kind of under control, at least Johnson, but now there's new administration and no offense to anybody that's doing that, but and I talked to the librarian at Johnson, she said it's taken four years to get this, so kids get it if they don't have their cellphones. I think McCormick is pretty strong about, I talked to students that I have. They said those cellphones go in their lockers and they don't come out until the end of the day. So I'd be a proponent of, if we had no phones and teachers don't have to interpret anything, they just don't have phones. And that's our policy and it's a positive thing because we're giving teachers, staff more time with their students and kids would actually have to talk to each other. So I'm a proponent of that.
Ben, Chair, trustee Hinkle brought up the, the, the cost question and I could definitely fill in.
Thank you.
As far as restricting access to phones, there's two main options. It's the pouches that you explained. There's only a few vendors in that marketplace right now. Within that kind of two vendor option, there's the opportunity to lease those pouches. It still comes with a, a fairly scalable cost. We have roughly sixty-two hundred students at the secondary level. That lease would be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year for those devices. Then you have to pay for the locking stations. We would need at least one in every classroom. Those are about five hundred and fifty dollars.
Every classroom? I had heard that you could do one at the entry, entryways and in the office, but not every classroom?
Kind of depends on how they're, how they're structured and what that policy might be like. There'll be a little bit of training and, and furniture setup, but the recurring costs for that lease would be a minimum fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars.
Could we ever start with high school?
There's certainly a way to scale it however necessary. The other option is more secure lockers. Now, that would require probably the secondary level at least, high school lockers in various classrooms. So you have the one-time cost for those, less recurring. You'll have some install costs, and that would be a little bit more upfront. You'd have to pay for each of the lock boxes and the install, but less recurring cost. Those would, that option, again, just kind of using the secondary level as a, as a benchmark would be one-time cost of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Please be honest, guys. Tell me, I mean, I taught five-year-olds, but I know that this is a problem. So tell me if this is like, no bar, stop. I'm, I'm, I'm open to honesty. So I'd love to hear if you think this would be horrible to implement or you think it's not a bad idea?
Well, I, I would caution on the yonder boxes. I've done research on that. The kids have already figured out how to get them open within five seconds. So it's not something, and there's not like an alert or anything that tells them that it's open.
Even with the magnet?
And so they figured it out. Did a lot of research on YouTube about it. And so it's something that would make it to more for certain that's mine.
The yonder boxes are which?
Correct, or they can be purchased outright, but they're.
They were like thirty dollars. I mean, I've even had somebody say, I'll get you in charge, you know, with somebody that. I also have, this one gal took the yonder box and she said, and you can't open them. And she hit it and it opened. So then they took, this company took them all back and redid them all for free because they, and she never said that they misfired, but I want to, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to add any more to your plates. But I think in the long run, it might, I mean, I'm concerned about the mental health. I'm concerned about the addiction. I'm concerned about so many things. I'm concerned about the kids are no longer doing tests. I had a little girl when I got my haircut, this little girl said, we used our cellphones in such and such a school for tests. And I'm thinking, what? So if they didn't have them at all, then they wouldn't have access now. So please address that.
I, I would just add, this policy was created in twenty twenty and we didn't have one-to-one devices. So needing the, the device for a learning has changed since that because we have the one. That might be something to think about. Also, the ambiguity of teachers having choice to use in the classroom, I think might, it's a different time because we have the one-to-one devices, so that might be some input for that policy. I mean, I think you nailed it. I think we can't talk about this without talking about the fact that our kids are addicted. We have some kids that are having serious addiction problems with those cellphones. And even if they're on silent, you hear the buzzing. And the buzzing is a distraction within itself as well. So I think those are all things we're going to have to try and work through. But because the policy was created prior to the one-to-one device, that might have something to add.
I'm sorry, and are you saying that because you have the one-to-one device, cellphones aren't necessarily needed for education, are you saying?
Right. I mean, they could use the iPads for video recording, like some different things in classes, like the theater productions. They have a device that you're providing and have some lockdown pieces to have them monitor.
So if a teacher wants to do a survey in class, they can do it all.
I think that's a great point. That's why the board, when in twenty twenty, left that language in that, that schools will create guidelines limiting. I wasn't crazy about that word, but it was argued at the time that cellphones could be used for teaching purposes. I think you're making an excellent point that that's no longer the case.
So I've heard that with the one-to-one devices, that if there are kids at the preschool have their iPad, then they're allowed to have access to their cellphone because some, they don't have their iPad. If that happens, could there be a rule or something in place that says, sorry, forgot your thing that you're not permitted to sign, but I mean, I feel like if we're just saying, oh yeah, that's fine, go and use your phone, like who's going to bring their iPads? So I think if we're going to focus on the one-to-one, we have to limit, like you can use your iPad. You know, like teachers cannot permit students to use their phone if they're going to forget their iPad. And then they fall behind and maybe they learn the consequence will shoot, maybe I should bring my iPad and not fall behind. That makes sense.
Do, do we have express in classrooms or in the library for those kinds of scenarios? Extra iPads?
No, well, schools have done different things. I think some of them made available some iPad or in some cases laptops, some little laptops that first run through. They're still, they're still, yeah. So there's, there's an option. Form, if that's what it's up to the school kind of to decide how to either accommodate those students.
At a large high school with fifteen hundred students, there could be a lot of iPads that kids would need to check out for a day because they left it at home, maybe.
But an iPad may not be necessary for learning.
That's true for every class. That's true.
Important to remember is that we don't want the iPad to replace the cellphone in, in terms of that screen time. So learning can still happen.
Okay, Brett, let me see if any of the other trustees have questions because we're just have about thirty more minutes, maybe a little less. Just to go.
I get, I get for us, you know, we can, this is something that some of us have been very strongly about. Is the general consensus amongst the principals that you guys would love to see no phone?
I would, I would love to see no cellphone in the classroom. I don't think they have strong self-site. I would love to see no cellphone in the classroom.
Is it enough to say, I mean, I have kids at different level, my, my youngest just finished elementary school. But in elementary school, you just didn't take your phone out of the backpack. And that seemed to work in the elementary schools. Can you do that at the junior higher high school? So I mean, I have a high schooler too. And I think if you told her, don't get your phone out of your backpack or you're going to see Mr. Kershner. I mean, I don't, I, I think, could you, would that be enough with kids to just say it can't be out during the classroom? Do we have to invest in very expensive pouches that apparently we can break or hack into for secondary principals? I mean.
With, with the teachers that are very consistent, it works, that works. If the policy at East is we shouldn't hear or see your cellphone during class and a teacher is consistent about that and starts off the year enforcing that expectation consistently, I think it works. We have a core set of teachers who make it a priority, spend some time and energy upfront, making sure that they enforce that right away. And they would to be that they don't have many issues as they progress this.
What about other secondary principals? What do you think?
I would agree, I would agree with that in terms of teachers who stand top of it inside of the classroom. I still think during passing period, lunchtime, advisement that happens, and I think we build a bathroom to use those cellphones too. And, and I think that kind of creates something. I think it, I think your comment was like, you know, if you're going to use your cellphone, you're going to see Mr. Kershner. To me, that works for eighty-five percent of the kids. It's the rest of the kids that, that we're trying to convince not to have their cellphones. I think that we have a policy, whatever that policy is, one of the things that we have to do, I would hope, is really get out in front of that because I think that other ten to fifteen percent that don't support that policy, their parents don't support that policy either. And that's really where it's principals, speaking for myself, I guess, that's, that's kind of where I get beat up a lot is when a parent says, no, you're not taking my kid's cellphone. I told them they can have it. That's absolutely in their prerogative, you're not taking their property, that I support having that cellphone. And so when you have fifteen percent of fifteen hundred children, that's a lot of, of kids that are, you know, you're, you're working with every day. So I, I think a strong policy that, that absolutely nowhere inside the building, you know, or in the classroom, bathroom always makes, makes less sense to me. And that's easier to enforce than, you have to hear, but not.
And speaking from experience, trying to have a stronger cellphone policy last year, we had, we were met with a lot of resistance, whether it was from students or from staff over time, just because we have to consider there's that human piece and that desire to be on it and the desire to deflect to that as well. And there was a relationship piece. I met with every staff member at the end of the school year and I said, how did it go? And the biggest barrier was they got tired of fighting it and said that it started to become a relationship issue between him and the student to the point that they would, the student completely disengaged because of the constant fight. So I think there's something to consider in that as well, and we have to take that human piece into the thought process. And for, for.
I'll just say that, I mean, the studies have shown that even if you don't look at the phone, just having it there and, you know, there's probably enough of a sound that most of them can hear it. And just that distraction is enough to distract from the person for many people. So that's my problem. But I would, you know, I, I, I think this is good for us because what we want, those of us here.
But I would, you know, I, I, I think this is good for us because what we want, those of us who are like, we're this, and I think most of us are. Um, is we wanna take that burden off of you guys and say, no, the board has said this is always gonna be. And this is our policy and that's what we're. I mean, that way when the kids are upset, they don't get upset with you guys. They have. Saying, no, this is, this is the district.
When thinking about having cell phones. In the classroom or not in the classroom, but in the whole days, the bathroom, lunch, like that's when a lot of the bullying happens. And that's when a lot of the social media crap blows up and pictures are shared or texts are shared. It's like, if we just have no cell phones. During school day at all. I mean, I feel as someone who has a little sister in high school, like. I would love to see no cell phones, no cell phones at all. And I think the same thing, like if we're gonna have. It'd be so much harder to enforce. Okay, not in the classroom, but anywhere else is fine, which I, I get, I get the human piece. And I, as someone who has her phone right here. I get how hard that would be. But if our, if we can teach our kids young. That we don't need to be attached to this stupid thing. I mean, how old are they going to middle school? Like thirteen, fourteen years old? Twelve, really?
It's too late.
If they can, like, it's just showing them as kids that you don't need this thing all day. I think they're gonna be shocked at how, I mean, they're old enough to comprehend how addicted they are to their phone. I know, I mean, I would be honestly. And so I, and again, just seeing like how much bullying happens during the classroom periods during lunch. I would be a proponent of just, you know, cell phones out during the day.
I would love that as well. I don't know that it would be practical in other families. So essentially, we've had some conversations about having a slogan, no cell bell to bell. Um, to be really clear about what we mean by that, because they inch out, you know. So I think it would be amazing to do that. I just don't know if we could.
Why, why? What, what, what would be?
To ensure that there's no cell usage the entire day in the building. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So we wrote a policy that said, no cells in the building.
Then we would need to know how to enforce that. And they would have to, is it locked up in the morning? They don't have access. Cause some of our students have off hours. So they would have to go get it if they were going to leave campus. We have the lunchtime. We would just have to know how that would be enforced. I think it'd be ideal. I mean, we know that cell phone usage is not good for students and their brains. I'm just not sure about how we would enforce it. So we'd have to think.
It's tricky too, because there, there's always a replacement device. There's, there's a bit of a black market for. Prepaying devices at any high school or private high probably. And then kids are pretty, pretty clever about figuring out ways to use their school issued iPad as a replacement too, so.
Okay, yeah. My question, can kids call their parents via their iPads? Cause I could, I have heard that they maybe could do that. So if there was ever an emergency and they had their iPads, they could call their parents, contact them through their iPads.
All the texts can be.
Not sanctioned, wait.
They could last year when it snowed, but now it's snow's gone.
Yes. Yeah, usually things that, and that's part of the issue with tools that they can communicate. They'll find ways to communicate with each other.
Texting each other iPads.
Yeah, which so we've done pretty well lockdown. Again, that's a, that's a situation.
Um, does it, uh, what?
Can they use parent?
Parents for, I'm like, the one or two, the new one.
Can they access that on their iPads?
They, they can. They can get to it on their iPad. I don't know that they can communicate with their parents, actually. Um, I know that. Yeah, it's, it's, it's employee to student or that's enabled. Employee to parents.
So above those lines, Madam Chair, um, this is one thought I had in thinking through this. What kind of problems? Cause I just have no idea what the volume would be if you took the option of routine mom. I forgot my socks for soccer, which happens to me a lot, or my iPad or whatever, app iPad. Um, what is the volume you would expect for students coming to the office to make those phone calls home? Is that gonna be a hectic thing or is that not concerning at all?
They don't think they'll. Phones in every classroom.
Okay, so they could just call from a classroom.
Well, as I was reading through, you know, there was like, well, you know, or you can use it in an emergency. Um, if we took all the cell phones out, I do know that there is a, a landline at every classroom. But these kiddos need some, we find how to use a landline. I mean, it's not super hard. You pick it up and dial the number and, um. Anyway. I mean, you could literally teach them about five minutes because they're all smart enough to figure it out, but, um.
So it sounds like the path, um, is moving toward maybe not having. I just wanna share a couple things like responding to that. That comment right there from me, which is, during an emergency. Probably the last thing that we're gonna have folks doing if they're in lockdown, if they're evacuating or whatnot, is be able to call. You know, the, the parents, because that's not a priority at that time, right? Um, as things settle down, they, they definitely, I think they could. And I think there could be other means made possible. Oftentimes, um, the sense of urgency is there for parents, right? And having a parent, I fully understand that. What's a sense of urgency versus what's an emergency? And the kids are first and foremost a priority for, for that. Um, so that, that can be worked out through another process, I believe, with a phone. And getting it to a phone or getting a cellphone handed out. One of the things that we train for lockdown is to turn off all your phones, except one. And put it on vibration. Because if you have to call nine one one because someone's outside your door, we want you to be able to do that. We want the nine one operator to be able to call you back and say, there's an officer at the door now. What we don't want is twenty-four cell phones going off simultaneously and illuminating the room, right? So, um, but again, understanding the parent side. I will share with you that the bomb threat that we had three years ago at South was initiated within the school on a cellphone. And that drug deals are being done to get cell phones. And I'll give you an example. Right now, vapes, I think everyone agreed, kind of given up on vapes. Vapes, you know, it's, it's a hard thing to chase, but. The way the kids are getting around it is they're texting and saying locker one twenty-two. So the kids go into the boys' room during passing period, they go locker one twenty-two and there's a THC vape. They go ahead and pay their money via Venmo for their hits. And then they go back to class. So the phones are more than just. You know, the communication device for, you know, getting to parents and whatnot. They're being used for a lot of different ways. You mentioned bullying, same thing. So, um, I just wanted to share that with you because the, the standard for security in schools is if you don't have to have cell phones, don't have. There's other means to meet what the community is asking for. Uh, then there's also that expectations management of what we can do regardless, if that helps.
Thank you, thank you. I was hoping, um, Mr. Man, I have just. I've heard great things about what Johnson has done with cell phones. Can you just speak to kind of what that has looked like in your building and? How it's working?
That was true. So, uh, one thing, of course, any policies only is good as the group leaders want to enforce it, right? So one of the keys is our, uh, staff leadership team has really taken on cell phones as well. So. Uh, monthly, we, it comes up in our staff meetings, we talk about where we're at with it still. So seeing it over and over, talking about it. Uh, we also have kiddos put their things in their locker first period and they can't access their lockers again until lunch. And they only access to the lockers at lunch and not again through the rest of the day. Uh, so if their phone is in their locker, if you see them at the locker, you know they're probably there for them. And so just not even having the access to it, their virtual lock box, if you will, the free lock box, it's in our always. Uh, so we do that. Um, and then it's been a lot of just vigilance our, our half, part of. Saying, hey, see that's out. Kind of follow through with the consequences. Uh, where are the first time we've taken phone, the second time we call the parents, they've been getting phone. Uh, subsequent times, same things will occur, even further consequences.
Have your parents been receptive to that? Like, we're gonna call you and you can get it? Not kind of people. Okay, other questions, sorry.
I have a question. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, I've heard a lot that. I mean, the policy is only as good as the influencers. And a lot of that is a teacher in the classroom. Um, so Mr. Perfect, you've mentioned to me like, yeah, if our teachers are good about it, beginning of the year lays that foundation. By the middle of the year, they understand. So how do we as a district approach equipping our teachers? To want to do the hard work of laying that foundation so that maybe it's a little difficult in the year, but the middle, end of the year, they get the expectation. What, what do you do at East to ensure that?
So we, we have pockets, right? Pockets that work well and pockets that may be reluctant. Uh, but I think something like just a consistent and supportive message that like. This is how we're gonna enforce this. This is what we expect from everyone. Um, goes a long way and, and sometimes creating a teacher who's struggling with endorsing it with somebody who's got it now, you know. Be pretty impactful. Um, part of, part of the issue is teachers have the option to say, you can have a phone in my room because it's for an instructional purpose. That caused some issues where, you know, there was wildly different expectations for a kid throughout the day depending on which teacher they.
That's where the future's.
Well, I think quite a lot of our success too has been our willingness to go get the phone from the classroom and then take care of it. So that the staff knows that if they call for this, that's, it's going to be dealt with. So that is one more thing for them that doesn't happen. Uh, so that part has been helpful for us as support teachers. We're asking for your support there at the SBR aspect of the trip.
And we have a scene as well in itself, but sometimes you get overwhelmed by all the phone calls that takes the backseat and one negative. Staff voice that they weren't supported turned into a wildfire of non-support as well. So those things that you have to consider as far as culture and climate go. Um, we started off really strong at South and we did really great till the semester, but again, it, it fizzled out because they were just so tired of having fight. And it was a consistent one every single day and every single class. And it was, it was hard on them. Um, and I heard them and. We're, we're adding another layer to remove the cell phones in, um, pockets in the classroom wherever they enter. And so because just even having it on, it was just too much to fight. So we're trying to remove it now from their person. Is it ideal? Probably not, but that's the next layer that we're gonna do until a stronger policy comes out.
Brett, um, can I ask, would it be harder to do the? Every classroom has their own pocket or lockbox or whatever? As opposed to you don't have your cellphone from the beginning of the day to the end of the day?
I think what it turns into is just a classroom management thing, right? So teachers, for example, newer teachers, one to three year teachers, they're not as strong in their classroom management and they're not as competent yet. And so in, at South, we have a lot of good teachers. And so then you're over fifty percent of my staff is new. So you're gonna see a lot more problems, right? Versus, um, and it's just school that has more veteran staff. And so we have to go over what does it look like about classroom management and how do you do that? How do you educate? How do you reteach? And how do you have policies and procedures in place? And it's a lot, it's, it's texting on the teacher to teach that all the time, every single day until it gets it. And some have that great personality and kids just buy in and others it's very consistent. And so.
So I'll speak up for McCormick. I mean, obviously being new, still learning stuff. Um, they were from, uh, seven fifteen. At that first, basically they could go to a classroom until two forty-five, cell phones were not allowed. That included lunch, that included outside time, that included everything. And I think that went really well because it's across the board, across the whole school. Every teacher or staff member knows. Um, from your parents to your SRO to anybody in there that from that timeframe, they're not allowed. And it didn't allow it up to a teacher to say, well, it's in my classroom. It wasn't allowed from that time period.
Jeff, are you aware, was that from those time periods deep in the backpack or in a pouch?
It could not be out. So if it was in the backpack, fine, but it could not be seen, not because of.
But the kids may still have had it, just not seen as opposed to locked up in the pouch or a lockbox.
And then to answer somebody else's question, like they had to come to the office to make a phone call. I was there a few days last spring, witnessed it. And so, yeah, second period, I have to teach the kid how to dial mine and write numbers and wait to check out. But I, I will also say that was very impactful because the kids had to come to the office to make that phone call. That's still pretty tough for permission, but permission was always very important. And then you call mom to drop off my track clothes or whatever. That system throughout the year, by the time I got there, it's years old that, um, they had it laid out.
It has to learn how to do a voice call.
That's you, Bert, and I think you had a question.
Um, what else can we as a board with this policy? Do to help you be more successful at what you do? Like, how can we support you and all of us be working as a team on this? So is there any verbiage in here that we need to? Take a look at, um, one of you did say use will versus may or shall. Um, and then as a former substitute, I, I would appreciate the. You know, every building has different policies and, oh, my teacher lets me use it and the kids tell you all the, all the lies. Um, you know, so if it was a district wide, as a substitute teacher, it'd be easier to go, no phones bell to bell. Like, and it doesn't matter if I'm teaching elementary or junior high or high school. Um, so anyway, what, what else can, how can we help you? And what in this policy has been successful?
Policy or the rights?
Um, I don't know.
The policy is actually.
Oh, the regulations, okay. So, so, oh, the policy's very short. Okay, in the regulations, like. Yes.
We're running into some smart watch issues. So while they, so while they may not have the phone, they can still get phone calls and texts. Apple watches. So that's something that I'm trying to think about and how they handle.
I would say the earbuds too. I don't know if you are familiar with teenagers and earbuds. All of their messages from their earbuds from their phone. So even if their phone is in their backpack, it's, they're still listening to all their text messages. And can respond. And so there's, there's other things to just take into consideration as well. The other thing I, we noticed is that sometimes we don't have enough, um, devices for the iPads to plug in to do some of the testing. And so teachers will let them use their own AirPods for testing. And so, and it kind of, that's hard to mitigate as well.
I have a question. I'd love just your, kind of your quick thoughts on it. Would it make sense in a policy, uh, we're really just brainstorming, right? And trying to figure out the best way to tackle this. But would it make sense to have, maybe it's a no, different expectations at different levels of school? I mean, for an elementary kiddo, don't wanna see it. Junior high, well, maybe we don't wanna see it at junior high, but at high school, bell to bell. I mean, would it? With my own children, as they've gotten bigger, they get bigger responsibilities, right? As they age and they. They have, um, different privileges at different ages. Is that, would it make sense to? Do tiers at all or, or no? Or just same thing for K through twelve?
I like that idea. I think you can't have it during passing time. You can't have it at lunchtime. You can't have it. You know, during our intervention time, that's awfully often restricted for kids that are transitioning to adulthood or. But, you know, it, it's the instructional time that we're so concerned about. It interferes with instruction. So I think we should really focus on instruction. And, you know, if we offer them a place to put it, or we let them know that it needs to be turned off if they're gonna keep it on. And it's, to me, it's pretty cut and dry. If the phone is on in the classroom, it's violation of the policy. We have a, and I know it's not the same. We have a policy, you can't have a pocket knife in school. But I guarantee you, we have kids that carry a pocket knife. And the only time that's an issue is when suddenly somebody sees it. Cause they just keep it for the way until, I don't know, hopefully they don't need it in school, but if they're gonna go do something after school or they. if they're gonna go do something after school or they forget, they leave them the chains and they put those jeans on. We have kids that sometimes have pocket knives in their pockets and we never know. Because they, they know that they can't help them out. So I would encourage you to, if you're gonna do that, like that idea and allow the high school to be instructional.
I'm sure. It's a child. Yeah, absolutely. So. If you did bell to bell classroom to classroom, you know, um. Where with the T, is it better to have the teacher collect the, the phone at that point? Because I think I heard that, oh, I think it was from South, if you're late in getting there because you've got other things going on, the teacher feels unsupported. So does that create any problems? Like, this is a time to sort of flush it all out. Do you have, you feel like your teachers would enforce it with fidelity? Regardless of the teacher's perspective on his cell phone? If that were the case, would it be the teacher that's best to collect that phone or is it better to call and have someone come in?
Um, I know my teachers have said they would prefer not to collect the cell phone just because it's, uh, it's a relationship battle, it becomes a power struggle. And that's not, and then it escalates after that.
Okay. I've been in that struggle, by the way, as a sub, so I know what you're talking about.
So I'm unclear about that. So if they don't want to touch the cell phone, tell me what they would want instead of that.
I'd have made a shirt for credit.
Cause I have in my possession, I think it was, uh, Johnson, one of the schools that I've been to, they have a sheet of paper and it goes with the cell phone. So, and the kids just drop it in, goes with the, and then somebody comes to pick it up and gets locked in the office until child picks it up or a parent picks it up or whatever. So it's, there's some accountability to.
What is good about doing that though? This classroom is that it minimizes when kids are in the hallway during instruction time. So the student goes to the restroom, do they have it on them? And they're in the restroom using it. During class time. So that would help maybe with that? I'm not sure. That's a good.
And I wonder too, and I mean, you're on the ground, so I don't mean any disrespect, but if everyone is collecting them, then I wonder if that doesn't help that relational piece a little bit. This is my job, I gotta do it. So. So guys, we're, we're getting super close to six and we might need just a few minutes to take a, take a break before we start that here, but I just, I, I think I can speak for all of us. We're so grateful that you took the time to be here and to share with us and to to give us your thoughts and your suggestions and your input. Um, would it be okay to ask if, if you have more thoughts or as you leave and you're kind of choned on it? If you have suggestions for us or things that you think we, we probably should pay attention to as we are looking at admin rig and policy? Would you email the board? Would you mind to just email us Dr. Newton? So, so he knows too, but just we, we really you guys are, you're on the ground and making magic happen. And if if we can incorporate what's gonna work best um, in your schools, I mean, I think we, we all would would want this to be very workable in your schools. So um, as you leave and you have thoughts, please share with us. Everybody. We appreciate it. Um, okay. But thank you for your time, Dr. Newton. I'll turn it back over to you. If, is there anything else or?
I'm sure that concludes our work session topic for the evening. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will call us out of our work session then and we'll meet again in five minutes. Thank you. It's six oh one. Sorry, we're late. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Laramie County School District number one Board of Trustees to order. Um, Dr. Newton, do we have any, actually, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dr. Newton, do we have any adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Madam Chair, there are no adjustments to this evening's agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the agenda.
And I second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have adopted the agenda. The first item tonight is, um, under our recognition of staff and students. And we have a special recognition tonight for our Community Relations Department. Um, so I'm gonna actually go down to the front just for a minute to lose recognition. So Laramie County School District number one is proud to announce that it has earned a national honor in the twenty twenty-five National School Public Relations Association Publications and Digital Media Experience Awards. LCSD one's Community Relations Office received an award of merit in the magazine category for the district's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, five edition of the Elevate Annual Magazine. Um, so I'd like to call the Community Relations Department up. Um, and that would be Mary Quas, the director, Brad White, Megan Case, and Lindsay Hubert. So, thank you. Congratulations. I just, on behalf of the board and the district, you guys are amazing. And you, every day, I mean, you all are everywhere. You can't escape the camera. I tell you what, every time you turn around, these, these guys are, they're, you guys are there, you're covering things and you are helping the district shine in everything that we do. I think we shine in a lot of ways and you all are just amazing at letting our community know, um, all the good things happen. And then we're so grateful for each of you. Um, but Mary, do you wanna talk at all about the award and this organization and?
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, gosh, it was, uh, it was such an honor to receive this award. It's the National School Public Relations Association. And for, um, many years, I, I have not, uh, submitted, um, an application for the award just because it's usually super large districts and, um, you know, they, they hire ad agencies to put their magazines and, and things together, but we have such a talented group of writers, photographers, videographers, and graphic designers that were able to do that and get a national award. And I mean, truly, this team is amazing. So just brings, uh, just makes me so happy.
Want to take your picture? Usually you all are taking pictures.
You guys are all coordinated. Barry, you tie them all in.
Okay. The next, um, section of our agenda is, um, public comment from visitors concerning agenda topics and non-agenda topics. Just was trying to pull this up on my computer uh, really quick. I believe we have one comment um, concerning an agenda item. There's a little text I'd like to uh, read before we start. I'm sorry, I'm not able to pull it up. Um. The purpose of the board meeting is to conduct the business of the district publicly. The board sincerely values community input and feedback on school operations and welcomes public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Individuals wishing to comment during a board meeting must sign up by five forty-five PM on the day of the meeting. Signups for public comment can be done electronically by accessing the form available on board docs under the public comment portion of the meeting agenda. Alternatively, individuals may contact Arlene Davis to be added to the electronic signup sheet. We begin each meeting by hearing public comment on agenda items, followed by public comment on non-agenda items. Please keep in mind that this is a time for board members to listen and consider, but not to comment or debate. The board asks that all speakers state your first and last name. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. And note that if you wish to discuss matters pertaining to the employment of a district staff member, such as the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, investigation, discipline, or dismissal of an employee, this will not be done during the public comment portion of the meeting. Such comments should be directed to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, or you may request to meet with the board during executive session. So to start off with, um, comments concerning agenda topics, I, I saw it earlier, so I think I remember, but I believe we have one person signed up in that is Ms. Patricia McCoy. Is she here or online?
I'm sure she's online.
By Zoom. Okay, great.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you try again real quick? Just wanna make sure we have it loud enough.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, trustees. My name is Patricia McCoy and I'm here to discuss the district's seclusion and restraint policy. While this draft aligns with Wyoming statutes in chapter forty-two of the Wyoming Department of Education rules, I have serious concerns about its clarity and transparency, specifically regarding who is authorized to perform restraints, what qualifies them, and what program is being used to train them. First, who is tasked with restraining students? The policy refers broadly to district employees but does not specify roles. Are these teachers, aides, or specialized staff? Without clear definitions, how can parents trust that only trained, qualified individuals are intervening? Chapter forty-two requires a balance of trained, classified and non-classified staff, but the policy seems to omit this. Will every school have a certain number of certified staff available? How will parents know whether there are enough trained individuals in their child's school? I ask the board to clarify not only which roles are designated for this training, but also to explain what the required staffing ratio is per school and how that will be communicated to the public. Second, what training and certifications make staff qualified to safely restrain students? The policy references an evidence-based training program, but gives no details. Does this program include de-escalation techniques? Least to most restrictive interventions? Safe reintegration methods? Chapter forty-two mandates these components. Without clarity, how can we be confident that staff are equipped to handle these sensitive situations safely? I ask the board to outline the scope of required training to ensure compliance and build parent trust. Third, what is the name of this evidence-based training program? The policy does not state it. Is it Crisis Prevention Institute, Safety Care, or another program? Transparency is essential. Chapter forty-two implies that this information should be publicly accessible. I respectfully request that the board I respectfully request that the board either name the training program in policy and ensure it's clearly available in the district's handbook or website. I understand this policy is required by Wyoming law, and I recognize the desire to avoid rewriting it every time a training program changes. However, parents need assurance that elected board members, not just administrators, are setting the standards for how our children are handled in crisis situations. We also need a clear oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, my screen just blanked out, so I guess I will just finish there.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. The next section on our agenda is Board Communications and Reports, first with upcoming meetings. We have scheduled, I think everybody's aware, but next Monday, August eleventh, from four thirty to eight, we will be doing a Board Governance Learning Session. It will be in the Executive Board Room, and we will have dinner for the board members, then any staff that are at that, but if everyone, I know that at least one board member will be traveling, but hopefully everyone can make plans to attend that. We have Sue Bellish, who works with WSBA, coming in to facilitate our discussions that night. So that's next Monday, August eleventh. Next Wednesday, August thirteenth at one PM, we have it down as Executive Trustees with Superintendent, but we will be doing a board planning meeting for our August eighteenth meeting. I wanted to first ask to see if Trustee Hinkle or Trustee Humphrey might be able to attend that. I'd like to spread the love in terms of who's able to attend.
I can't get one.
You're not able that day, okay, Trustee Humphrey can be there. My understanding, Trustee Plussen and Ashby, you're not available that day, is that right? Okay, so Barbara, Marilyn, would one of you like to attend with Trustee Humphrey and I?
On the thirteenth? I, I could. I am, she can.
Okay.
It's okay.
Alright, we'll put Trustee Burden down on that, and Trustee Humphrey. And so that meeting is Wednesday, August thirteenth. Then our next general meeting of the board is Monday, August eighteenth, two weeks from tonight. We'll be holding a work session at five PM that night. We typically only do those on the first meeting of the month, but we have moved the, what would have been a September eighth work session time, we're gonna move it and do it August eighteenth. So on September eighth, we will not have a work session, but so for our next meeting, we'll have a five PM work session and a six PM regular board meeting. And then on August twenty-second, as folks are, our staff is back in action, and before our kiddos come back from eleven AM to one PM, trustees were invited to join in for the LCSD One All Staff Picnic, so if you are available to attend that day, that'd be great. And that is all we have for upcoming meetings at this point in time. Do we have any individual board communications or reports? Trustee Burden?
Something kind of exciting, we have a former Cheyenne High School graduate that just last week or the week before signed with the Memphis Grizzlies professional basketball. That would be Lawson Lovering. And the only reason I know is because it's my best friend's kid. Oh, and his mom works for the district. Ms. Fox, is that right? Lynn, yes.
Awesome. Anybody else? Trustee Cook?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I had the privilege of participating in the challenge rodeo, and I'd heard about it as a teacher, but I've never seen it. So it was interesting to be paired with a child, it was pretty fun, but I wanted to draw attention to three people, Holly Burningham, Principal at Pioneer Park, Janet Maxwell, she's an OT, and Tammy Schlegel, OT in the district, and they were so organized with this whole thing, so, you know, summer, and that was their thing, they, it was well, well done, and then Beth likewise, a friend of mine, she was a fellow volunteer, she's a sped teacher in the district, so it was well-run, I think the kids had a ball, parents had a ball. They got to experience a lot of cool things, petting the sheep, riding a horse, and as well as eating, they had lunch too, so, and then I think they could enjoy the carnival during Frontier Day, so a thanks to the Frontier Days people too, for allowing that to happen, so that was really good.
Thank you for sharing about that, that's something I've always hoped to do, and it has not quite worked with family obligations or things, but I'm so glad you were able to participate. Anybody else? Alright, well that will wrap up our Board Communications and Reports, and Dr. Newton, we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of highlights this past week, late, starting last Wednesday, our administrators, not only we're back on contract, but we're knee-deep in meetings, trying to get all of the very important things we'll be focusing on this coming year in front of them, and so I'm very appreciative of their hard work and focus. We all get a taste of what it's like to be a student, having to sit still in a chair for hours on end, and so maybe my apologies to both the adults and the students when we do that to them. But the meetings were, were very successful, we just finished them up today. On the, as Madam Chair mentioned, our upcoming work session on August eighteenth, just to provide a little bit of context there, in the same way the board approves like the district calendar last spring, they, the board will be contemplating passing the Behavior Matrix tonight. We will have a work session in, in advance of a potential vote by the board on the twenty-five, twenty-six facility use fees for Laramie One, and so there will be that work session on August eighteenth where we'll try to walk through any questions or or discussion you would like to have on that in advance of the vote on August eighteenth. The, the other thing I often do in this, in this moment is to talk about any clarifications on consent agenda items. We have, there might be some questions as well on our regular items, but we always have the ability to discuss those to get questions answered. But on the consent agenda, I might point to Item D one point six, the concurrent enrollment, just to get our bearings, it was the last couple of meetings where you approve the payment of the bills for that relationship that we have where kids can get college credit while they're still in high school. The consent agenda motion tonight is to enter into the MOU with a couple of our community colleges for the coming year, most of our work is indeed done with LCCC. However, you'll also notice there is a reference to Western Wyoming Community College, that's just at this point for World History Course, and the reason we sometimes enter into relationships with other community colleges are just in those moments where LCCC is not able to offer that to our kids, so one of our other community colleges steps into play. So just a clarification on that, and with that, Madam Chair, that's the end of my reports.
Thank you. We'll move now to consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
And I second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve all motions listed as consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, has it been approved? Moving into new business, let me just start with some motions.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a fee proposal with Knife River in an amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, including ten percent contingency for associated governmental fees and requirements for the replacement of Alta Vista Parking Lot.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a fee proposal with Knife River. Do we have any questions or clarification on that? Yes, Trustee Ashby?
When are we doing that?
Madam Chair, Trustee Ashby, that's going to start probably late September, first of October.
Okay, is that gonna be a problem with?
No, we'll have to, we'll have to change the parking a little bit over there in the bus route, that had to be pushed from last spring to fall, but it needs to be done, so, and we had it in design already and, and have a contractor on board for this fall. It'll take probably about five weeks, four to five weeks.
Other questions?
And, and, and why was it delayed?
Because major maintenance money ran out, we had too many projects.
Any other questions? Trustee Cook?
When will it start? Right immediately, or is it September?
Trustee Cook, yeah, so it's not immediate, it'll be about mid to late September before they're able to mobilize over there.
Thank you.
Mr. Knapp, just out of curiosity, do they, do they do part of the parking lot and then keep other parts available for parking, or everything just shuts down?
Madam Chair, they'll shut the whole parking lot down.
Okay.
We'll reroute the buses, probably, I don't know, that'll be up to the principal where that's the best place to bring them in, but I think they'll come in on the north side there, along the sidewalk, most likely.
Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, Trustee Cook?
Yeah, I'm sorry, one more, thank you, Madam Chair. Will the neighbors be notified that teachers will be parking in the neighborhood?
Madam Chair, Trustee Cook, we probably will not notify the neighbors. There will be signs up the construction starting, but I don't know how I would exactly notify all the neighbors on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, thank you, Mr. Knapp. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we've had a discussion, all in favor of approving the fee proposal with Knife River, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That has been approved. We have another motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve placing the proposed amend rule related to seclusion restraint, forcible physical contact, and corporal punishment out for forty-five day public review and comment. The proposed amended rule brings our policy up to date with Wyoming Statute twenty-one dash three dash one-ten in the Wyoming Chapter Four Rule, Seclusion and Restrains Schools. The proposed rule will be available for review from August fifth, twenty-twenty-five through September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five at four PM on the district website, www.laramieone.org, and the Board of Trustees link to Board Docs or in the Administration Building at door number one, address is twenty-eight ten House Avenue. Comments may be submitted directly online at the district website, www.laramieone.org, or via email to rebecca.gill@laramieone.org.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve placing the amended rule out for forty-five day review. Do we have questions or discussion on this one? Trustee Hinkle?
Couple things, one is, can we read, before we send it out, can we read letter, the paragraphs, because they're not correct? Because they got rid of V, but now it says CD, so it needs to go AB. Right. And then I would assume that the information that Ms. McCoy was talking about in her discussion is in the regulations that are attached with this.
Madam Chair, Trustee Hinkle, they are, but perhaps I could call up Dr. Kern, and she might be able to address and even anticipate some questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees, Dr. Newton. Yes, we, a lot of the details that are required for us to have in policy based on Chapter, Wyoming Chapter Forty-two are found in the admin regs, and we are currently updating those as well, because there are some key things that are not in, in the regs that should be. So some of the clarifying concerns and questions will be addressed in the admin regs.
And is that, is that allowable by the statute, by the statute?
I, Madam Chair, Trustee Hinkle, I believe so, that is how our policy has been, our current policy is, is the policy is a little more vague and the admin regs clarify, so I believe it will be, and I did I, I sent our current proposed policy and regs to WDE, and they said that they did not need to approve them as is, so I, I believe it will be allowed, yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair, can you give me an example of what's, including a child, a student, what that looks like, or?
Madam Chair, Trustee Cook, absolutely, we, it can look quite a few different ways, but with our district chosen evidence-based program, there are different types of holds that we train only a certain number of staff get trained on the, on the different restraints, so there I probably would forget if I tried to name them all, but there are restraints that we train, that we definitely train on that, ensure that we take care of students in the process.
So, again, Madam Chair, I was talking specifically about secluding, so
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay, so restraining I get, I know there's different methods, but I was curious about the seclusion of students.
Yeah, my apologies. Anytime that we remove a student from their learning environment, and they are to a space, it could be within an enclosed space, it could be off to the side, any type of a space where they are not allowed to willingly leave that space, that is deemed seclusion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Plussen?
I'm just following up on Trustee Hinkle's question, because I wrote in a few things that Ms. McCoy mentioned, but Ms. Kern, would the training involved be outlined in the regs then?
Madam's Chair and Trustee Plussen, yes, absolutely, that is all in there.
And even though, I mean, I can see where we might not name the evidence-based training program, but if someone were to request to know what it is, I'm sure it would be available, is that correct?
Absolutely, it's not a secret, we have been using the MACT system in the past, I'm not sure for how many years, but this year we have transitioned to CPI's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention. Our principals actually just went through the training themselves last week, and we have a plan to roll that, the training out district-wide over the next two years in a two-year cycle, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Thank you very much, appreciate you coming up. Alright, well, all in favor of approving this amended rule for forty-five day review? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will go up for forty-five day review, and I'd like to remind the folks listening or listening later on, with that forty-five day review time, if you have questions, if you have concerns, if you have maybe not, I guess not so much questions, but if you have concerns about the policy, please take part in that opportunity to publicly, or to comment publicly, the board will see that and will review it. And if there are things that the district has missed in, in tweaking that policy from what it's been, I know the board would love to hear about that and consider that before we vote on this in about six weeks. Alright, we have another motion.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the proposed Behavior Matrix for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year for the Laramie County School District Number One.
I second.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed Behavior Matrix for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. I imagine we have some questions and some conversation on this, so who would like to start? Trustee Plussen?
Madam Chair, I have to apologize, we have a new way of looking at our, our documents, and I'm looking at the public version on my laptop, so I'm gonna go from memory, but I did look this afternoon at the, the version that I could link into, and I spoke to the superintendent last week, and I did not see the changes incorporated. So I'm just curious if it was not updated on the link that was available to our board, or specifically, I think in just the back and forth. that was available to our board or uh, specifically, I think in just the back and forth on the, I don't know if it was tier three, but I think it was tier three for drug and alcohol use. Um, the, the drugs part was left out of the, the explanatory language and I just want to make sure that was included before it goes out.
Uh, madam chair, trustee Clausen, um, all updates were made and whether or not they appeared on the document that you were looking at, I'm uncertain, but our most recent version of those documents do include the, the, uh, those changes.
Thank you.
Who else? Just you could.
And someone said question, can you, can you explain tier one, tier two, tier three, please? And I think level one, level two, level three must mean the times that kids, you know, they do it once, this is the response, if they do it twice, this is the response, but I'm unclear about tiers, please.
Madam Chair, trustee cook, there's um, a little bit of nuance and if the board will indulge me, maybe I'll let um, Mr. Lewis walk us through um, the way to view those documents, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, um, madam chair, um, all the trustees, Dr. Newton, uh, first and foremost, uh, I want to say what a pleasure it's been to work, uh, not only with the, the, the team of uh, student services, I know that that title was changed, but also this past week being able to visit uh, and collaborate with the principals amongst the district, uh, being new to Laramie County One, it's uh, it's really been a great opportunity and exciting to work with, with such a group of professionals. Uh, prior to coming on board in July, um, really, the, the, the team, uh, student services started to put together a framework to really look at uh, behavior, create those behavior matrices. Uh, I want to thank that team, uh, all of the members of the team of student services, especially uh, Ms Amanda Hall for really starting that work uh, and putting it together. Um, initially, when we first saw the document itself, we thought to create a discipline matrix. Um, and then starting to pour through different versions of it, really focusing on is it appropriate to have an elementary and a secondary, uh, and, and really as we started to get in the weeds, really trying to identify how to best create a document that focused on district-level consistency, but at the same time giving um, giving enough opportunity for building administrators uh, to appropriately address situations with context that they know best about. Um, to answer the initial question, um, going from that traditional discipline, progressive discipline plan where you have an infraction or a behavior that's identified and then it's their first defense, um, and then you make that correlation and assign. Uh, something we started to look at was instead of just progressively going through first offense, second offense, third offense, is try, to try to identify levels. Um, so even if a, a behavior were to take place and it was a severe behavior, uh, to make sure that we're addressing it appropriately, not just because it's a first offense or on the other side, if it's something that has substantial context to it, how are we, how are we genuinely treating the behavior? Now, what I mean by that is by going through the matrix itself, tier one, uh, just to address tier one or would be you're considered, you're pretty low-level behaviors, um, things that can be addressed in the classroom in some situations, focusing on reteaching, making sure that we're we're supporting students through that behavior. Tier two is more severe and tier three would be your most severe behaviors, uh, in what we see. And those are the tiers that are identified. Associated with each tier would be the criteria, so if it was an offense like, um, uh, situation with inappropriate language or profanity, then we would look to the criteria to see how frequently is the student doing it? What's the severity, what's the impact that it genuinely had in the classroom environment? How does the, what was the intent, was it maliciously done, was it accidental, what, where truly getting a pinpoint of what the incident is? And after using the criteria, that lets us determine what the level of intervention is. If it's all pretty benign and something that really focuses on that reteaching component, that would be more of your level one versus something that was pretty intentional, pretty outrageous, pretty um, disruptive, that would be more on your, your higher level. So the traditional framework of first offense, second offense, third offense, uh, that's something that we're trying to move away from simply for the fact to allow administrators in the buildings, that ability and that autonomy to genuinely address behaviors uh, with whatever redirection is most appropriate for that. Um, also, I, I apologize and I'll, I'll make sure that the corrections were done. Um, as we went through the process, um, in really trying to, to think about as many things as possible, is it necessarily appropriate for a seventeen-year-old and a seven-year-old to have the same level of expectations? That's something I, I would tell you professionally and personally, I, I think I hold a little bit higher standard to someone who has a driver's license versus somebody who got out of a car seat a couple of years prior. So to make sure that we're, we're trying to, trying to support our district as, as widely as it can, but at the same time understanding that grade levels, communities, schools themselves, um, making sure that they have, I'm not gonna say the autonomy, but the ability to see all of that context that really is involved in a situation and let our principals make sure that they can use that discretion within that framework. Um, after that was established, uh, again, being the new guy going through and making sure that they're aligned to statute and then also aligned to policies as best I could find. Um, and then Thursday afternoon, be, having the opportunity to present it to all of our principals and building leaders within the building. Um, really good conversation, uh, allowing for them to pour into the document, uh, working amongst groups um, and really starting to walk through scenarios, walk through ideas, uh, and walk through how this fits in. Uh, I would tell you the feedback that I got back from principals, uh, is, is optimistic. Um, where I think the biggest concern lies is, is we don't know how this car is gonna drive yet. Uh, and holding that into account of a lot of things here of we really won't be able to identify what we missed until the school year started and an application begins. And that's something that principals did ask, uh, really for that grace and leniency that as we move through this process, again, the ability to, to make changes and make sure that we're fixing things, uh, as they're identified. Um, during Thursday afternoon, um, principals provided me with, with quite a bit of feedback. Um, a lot of that feedback came into the, the areas of making sure at the elementary level that we're really focusing on uh, and making sure that, that for younger students that they have an opportunity to really learn and engage in conversation about the behaviors that, that they were engaged in. Um, secondary had a lot of questions, primarily in the tier three area, those more severe areas, looking and making sure that, um, if substantial things are done, um, that they are addressed at that level and making sure that there is support to doing that. Um, another part of that feedback, and there were some components of feedback that we couldn't necessarily implement on this go-around, just because they were um, they were definitely conversation pieces. Uh, for example, when we start talking about attendance and tardies. At the elementary level, there was a concern of, you know, when we had students that might be tardy to class, um, that we're going to discipline and provide punitive, uh, punitive measures. When that might not necessarily be their fault, um, parents are running around, things are happening, life happens, and it's not necessarily the student. So making sure that we're addressing that. Whereas the context of maybe a student who finds himself a little bit longer on the playground or hanging out in the halls a little bit, where maybe that context would, uh, involve parental contact and also some sort of consequence moving forward. Um, so really good feedback from principals, um, also with the, the optimism, but at the same time, uh, making sure that, uh, things are being approached and looked at uh, under, under scrutiny, um, with the creation of behavior council, which will be a meeting that we'll be doing throughout the course of the year to review not only this, but also student behaviors throughout the district to try to identify, are we seeing trends, are we seeing things? And at the same time, does this document, is it accurately reflecting how we're best supporting kids? Um, and holding them accountable for specific behaviors we're looking for in school. Um, that work will continue. I think it's really important that something to this level of, of what we're trying to do to support not just the principals, but the teachers, the students and our community members, uh, who are at school. It's a document that has to continually revise to make sure that we're addressing what needs to be addressed. I, I hope I answered part of that question, be happy to answer any other.
That's great. What other questions, trustee Hinkle?
Um, that brings up a good point, thank you, madam chairman, um, so we're approving this, um, today. I think we're gonna approve this today, but we're voting on it. Um, if it gets approved, how will changes be made as those come up? Will that be something that we have to approve later or it, will this be a, a dynamic document that we would just then reapprove next year with those changes?
Madam Chair, trustee Hinkle, it's a, it, it turns out that that might be the million-dollar question right now. Um, I think what makes it a little tricky to answer is, we could imagine um, a wide variety of changes we may want to make. If it's a language substitution or clarification, that feels like we're not changing the intent of what the document is, but to the degree that we may wildly readdress how we respond to a certain discipline, um, consequence. Um, it would be my belief that cleaning up language, um, we might be able to update the board on, but if we're substantively changing the direction of the matrix, I would anticipate maybe, and, and I'm, I'm waiting for, um, Ms. Polly to, to, um, to weigh in here, um, maybe a little bit like when we have to make uh, calendar revisions, it comes before the board again and we explain exactly the change that we're making and then we, um, vote that through again. I would hope that there's a bit of grace to clean up. Uh, for example, the, the one, um, example that trustee Clausen mentioned really was, uh, an oversight, just grammatical oversight, that we could clean those up without coming before the board saying, can we re, um, adopt the matrix, we fixed a grammatical error? So I think it will depend on the nature of the changes we want to make, but I also think we, we, we stand behind this document and, and we stand behind any potential changes we want to make, and so we will absolutely bring it before the board when it's prudent to do so. How did you on that, Amy?
Um, madam chair, Dr. Newton, I think that that covers it. I think when you look at it, if you're, if you're making substantive changes, if, uh, you know, a tier one behavior is, is, um, going to be elevated to a tier two behavior, those are the types of changes that would come back before the board for the board to approve. Um, if it's a matter of clarification, um, you know, kind of wordsmithing so that it provides better clarity for, for those, you know, actually enforcing the behavior matrix. Those are things that might be updated to the board to let you know that it's happening, but, but those more substantive will come back before the board.
Thank you.
Justy could.
Yeah, thank you, madam chair. Uh, Mr. Lewis, can you, um, explain the behavior council? A little bit more, is that like a monthly meeting? And, um, I had spoken with a behavior specialist and she had talked about monthly meetings where teachers could come and say, ooh, I've got this child, this is what they're doing, what would be the best practice for um, helping this child, so can you explain that a little bit, please?
Uh, um, madam chair, trustee cook, yes, um, the behavior council would look very similar to academic council, that's a current practice, uh, where administrators do monthly, uh, meet with um, members of the division of student services to one, review major concerns that are going on behaviorally, uh, two, focus on changes, modifications uh, to the matrix that they're recommending moving forward, and then three, also, I think envisioning opportunity for scenarios to kind of calibrate um, what, what moving through the process looks like. Uh, with regard to meetings where, where teachers have that opportunity, um, that I would strongly recommend that they work through their uh, leadership teams within the sites, uh, and then that information can come through principals. Um, I do know that, uh, at the secondary level, uh, we're looking to bring back a meeting where, uh, counselors and building administrators would meet um, to, to try to address supports that may border on behavioral concerns and also any mental health concerns that are out there as well.
Thank you. Justy Carson.
Madam, madam chair, thank you, I forgot to mention this when I spoke earlier, but I wanted to just say thank you and I, I'm probably speaking for a lot of us on the board for the work that's been done here. Um, we, we really have come together on a lot of issues, important ones, and this I think is, is one of them. And so thank you for the work, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for coming on and hitting the, hitting the ground running on this. Um, we're really hopeful that it'll be something that principals can, can point to when they have um, situations with legitimate behavior or with outside, you know, in our communities, our parents or others that may be, um, not wanting to agree with the decision that our building leaders might make, but they can point to this and say, listen, this is our district. This is how we're going to be handling behavior and, um, hopefully that will be helpful to the folks in our buildings. But I just wanted to say thank you and, um, thank the superintendent for being so diligent to follow up on this issue.
Anybody else? I just had a couple of things, if I could just take a minute, and the first was to, um, wanted to say much of what trustee Clausen said, but, um, at the beginning of January, I asked this board to um, just get back to me and let me know what some of their top priorities were for us as a board and things that we might look into or really try to help laser in on as a district this year, um, and I can tell you that from the seven of us who very individually put together our short list of our top priorities, behavior and addressing behavior, behavior and equipping our educators and our administrators out in the district was on the list of every single board member, so this is, um, there were, there were a couple of issues on there that we almost all agreed upon, but um, really digging in and addressing behavior and equipping our folks in the district to um, to have a leg to stand on and maybe something to fall back on when, um, and trying to be consistent from school to school. Um, this was, this was a huge thing for us and so I do, Dr. Newton, I, you have spearheaded it and I know your team has worked um, for months on this. And so we, we really are incredibly grateful and we hope it's a useful tool and do know that it's a dynamic document and if we need to revisit something, I think we all are incredibly open to doing that, um, just because we, we want it to be a great tool and something that is, is helpful um, out in the district. So I, I did have a question though, and I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, if you, if you said this and I missed it, but so you, the principals are back and we've been working with them, what are, what are the next steps with teachers, because I would hope that this is also a document that is in every classroom and that teachers feel confident and relying on as they're dealing with sometimes kind of crazy behaviors.
Thank you, madam chair, yes, um, in part of the uh, as teachers come back, uh, and we have their in-services prepared moving forward, um, there, uh, where there was a huge component in the district-wide training uh, where we are focusing on verbal de-escalation and making sure that we're, we're trying to help support students. Um, and then other things that were expected when teachers come back into the building is to make sure that the discipline matrix is put into place, that the majors and minors within the elementaries are very clearly established, uh, how to best support some of that tier one support through the M T S S process. Um, so through, uh, teacher professional development as they come back, one, to make sure that they're aware that this document is there, uh, and also to, to help principals be able to work through that with teachers. Um, as far as where is, where is appropriate classroom management, uh, and really trying to delineate that line between uh, how do we best support teachers in the classroom and when has a behavior escalated past that where now we've got to get um, building administration involved.
Absolutely, thank you. Um, my next question probably is more for Dr. Newton, um, but now that if, if this is passes tonight, uh, we've got this great document. How, how do we get the word out, what are, what are the next steps, because they, I think as a parent, it would be nice to know that this is in place and um, you know, it might even be nice for parents to know before their child's in trouble, that there's something, um, you know, in place of how we react to things, so what? You know, in place of how we react to things. So what are, what are the steps for getting word out?
Madam Chair, uh, thank you for that question. I think uh, um, that's a very good point. Whether. We, we can call this a behavior matrix, but if we really think of it as a teaching tool. It really clarifies to families and to kids and everyone within our system. What does it look like to be a good student and what does it look like when we fall short of that? And um, we all fall short in many ways and how can we use this as a document to teach rather than just a punitive document? Um, I would say that. This document is the beginning of many conversations. It's not the end of the conversation. Um, to the degree we would use it to just point to the cell and that this is where your kid is landing today. Um, that's completely contrary to our, one, our desire to work with families and work with kids so they don't offend. Um, but also to help really paint the picture of what does it look like to get back on track, to be in class, to be good students. And so I think there is absolutely a um parent piece to this. I will be sending out um a district wide message that talks about. Um, safe and orderly environments in our schools. That means a whole lot of things. This is one piece in that conversation. Directing them um to this new work. Uh, but but I would also say that those um conversations are kind of going to come alive. As they talk with both their principals and their teachers in things like um. When, when we welcome students back in the open houses, in all of those uh opportunities that that buildings. Will have to visit with um with their families on what this looks like. So I will hopefully um. Uh, bring awareness through a message from my office um to parents. But then I think the the nuts and bolts of it will really play out in those great healthy conversations that uh principals and teachers have every day with families.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, well, we have a motion and a second on the behavior matrix and adopting that. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that has been approved. Thank you again to everybody who worked on that. The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, August eighteenth at six P M. A work session will begin at five P M. The district, business of the district is now done. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, I moved to go into executive session prior to adjournment for the purpose of personnel and legal advice.
My second.
So we have a motion and a second to go into executive session at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will break to go into executive session.